September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Belmont County Community School District Board of Directors for War. We'll call McKenna.
Chris McDaniel. Michelle Murphy.
Eric.
Sharon Barclough.
Here.
Gary Burkland.
Here.
Ryan Myers. Heather Ridgway.
Here.
Jim Swenson.
Here.
Okay, so we do have a forum. We have a guest tonight. I'll do the introduction. It is candidate Thompson. Welcome. Thanks for coming. Take some time out of your night. Missing your grandson's football game. Thanks for making time to meet with us. School Board has a deep concern for the education of our Belmont County youth as well as students across the state of Iowa. Tonight, we would like to share with you our vision for how education can be improved in our state. The Belmont County Board wants to be involved in the legislative process. We're hoping we can count on you to work with us as we both try to build a better future for our children and Iowa communities. But first, we would like to hear from you. Is there anything you'd like to say to us before we throw the darts at you?
Well, this isn't where I envisioned being a few, about a year ago. I didn't envision doing this. You've got my brief bio there. My wife and I grew up outside of, I grew up, he grew up on a farm. She grew up in town. We took off in nineteen seventy-seven, the night of our wedding, and we went around the world doing various things. And always intended to come back here and happily did in twenty sixteen. Since then, with respect to education, I've been a sub-teacher over in Coringofield, Dows. Gives me an episodic observation of education, certainly not a day-in, day-out. But I know the dedication that they exhibited over there, and I know there's a lot of people that share in the concern, deep concern for the education, and not only the education, but the upbringing of our, of our children, in my case, my grandchildren now. So we've had the gamut of educational experiences for our two children. Our eldest bounced around a lot because of my Marine Corps career, and she started in California. We moved to Montana. We then moved to Okinawa, where she went to the term DOD school, Department of Defense School, and somewhat akin to public school as well. The last year, her sixth grade year, the school frankly was too dangerous for me to have my daughter in. It's hard to conceptualize military dependence being violent, but they were violent, and we weren't going to have her in that, so we homeschooled her. I say "we," my wife. I was deployed someplace most of the time, so she, she gets the kudos for that. We came back, and she finished out her secondary education in public school. Our youngest child started Montessori in Okinawa, started Catholic school in, in Virginia when we came back in ninety-three, and finished her secondary education through Catholic schools. So we've seen a lot of views of, of education, and like every loving parent, we care about our children's education more than we care about ourselves most days, so, and their futures. So that's kind of my education chunk of my background, so I'll, I'll stop at that.
So you kind of brought up like the, the violence at school and that stuff, that it wasn't safe for your, for your daughter to go there. So like last May, there was another school massacre, obviously, and it took the life of nineteen students and two teachers, and there's been a string of them throughout, you know, the last, what, twenty-five years? Columbine Red Lake, Sandy Hook, Marjorie, Santa Fe, Oxford, Moyn East, and a lot of other ones, too. So I know that it wasn't safe for your kid to, you didn't feel it was safe for your kid to go there, but what do you think is gonna prevent, like what is your plan for preventing the gun violence and mass shootings in our communities?
Well, I know that in Coringofield, Dows, where I have some observation, you don't get into school unless you're, you go through a door that's previously locked and you're approved to get in the building, so.
But most schools are like that, right?
I'm sorry?
I said, most schools are like that.
They're not like that.
They are like that.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that that's probably.
I, I don't think the most recent one was like that. I think the gentleman, not the gentleman, the person got in without any, any screening. So first off, not everybody gets to go into schools. I think violence of any type towards a child, whether it's a gun or a knife or a hammer, is reprehensible, and we do have to do, when we have to screen people that come into, in the building, and if they're not appropriate, then we tell them to go away.
Except, sir, so your answer is if we have security in place, then we're, we're good? Because I guess I push back and say Sandy Hook Elementary, they had that security entrance, and the assault rifle just cut right through the entrance, and he entered through windows, he shot out.
Well, I, I am not particularly well-informed on any of those specific events, so I'll, I'll take your, take your, your word on that, so.
Could, could I ask you a better question? Do you think that you could be a part of a, a program through our state to provide more funding to more secure our schools? I mean, you know, there's a whole range of possibilities. We could have policemen on every corner of every hallway in every school. That may or may not be safer, because now we got more guns inside the schoolroom, you know, in the hallways. We could fund, however, more, more electronic mechanisms that could protect the kids from having someone enter into the school to cause some violent event. We could, you know, there's some who suggest we, we, we have the teachers start packing heat. I guess I'm just looking for, what, what kind of guidance would you give us?
I think, I think your first question would be, the answer to that would be a yes in terms of better able to screen what people are carrying coming in, in, in the school. But first of all, we have to know their intent, so if, if, if there's a, a threat known, then we not, probably need to know, have to have more at the front table or front desk than the schools, the principal secretary, because that's the first person I see when I walk in the, well, in, into the elementary school, I see the principal secretary and I see the nurse. In the middle school, I see the principal secretary. In the high school, I see just the secretary and her, but, you know, they're all looking at me, and, and, you know, I'm a known entity. If I'm not a known entity, then they, they treat me like an unknown entity.
Yeah, I think one of the serious things that it's so hard to discern when, when it's one of our own who is coming in with a malintent, when one of our own students is the one who's carrying the weapons, and we say, oh, it's Billy. Oh, Billy's fine, hit the button, and then the door he goes. Even a trained officer could say and do the same thing and let Billy inside that door with, with hand grenades, or with a bomb, or with weapons that are concealed from the view of the person wanting to enter. I guess, I'm not sure I have an answer either, and I'm just looking for ways in which we could better secure our schools, and how would we fund that?
We better secure our society, though I think also by having a more robust ability to treat people with mental illness. I talked to the sheriffs, and they have no choice but to put a person in jail who's mentally unstable, to put it mildly. The, the, the final opinion is not out on the young man in Clarion, who I know personally, and that's where I, I got figuratively speaking, beat over the head, my, beating myself over the head, because I had a relationship with him in terms of mentoring, so forth and so on. I know his parent, I know his parents, they're wonderful people. Every teacher said great things about the young man, and there's no explanation. So.
Some sense does.
And it is not a bad family, it's not a bad person, it's not someone that you saw have indicators. So I think, and, and last night, when I, I teach religion, religious ed to fifth graders, and I, I didn't want to get into the details, I just said, when you're really mad at yourself or you're mad at somebody, do you have somebody you can talk to? And I just, and I didn't get into the details of the young man, but I think we all have to be that person that we don't even know we are some days, that says, you can, you can, you can bring me bad news or weird news, and we can talk about it, so.
Yeah.
But mental illness, I think, is something we gotta address much more aggressively.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, my turn. This, I'm gonna add a little, little bit of this as I go. Each year, this school board identifies its legislative priorities. For several years now, our number one priority, funding support for mental health. We spoke about that. We feel so strongly about this that we even said we would be willing to suffer diminished school funding for time in order to make major changes in our state mental health support systems. Unfortunately, no significant improvements have been done in many years. With that being said, probably for the past twenty-five years, if not thirty, Gary might be able to help me on that, Iowa has had a real issue with mental health. They have cut back funding in virtually every facility we have, and I think everybody knows here that goes in Glenwood. I've been in every one of those facilities, not as an inmate.
Oh, yes, you were.
You'd be nice. I have worked in those, and I struggle with how we as a society, let alone a legislative branch in, in Devine, can slow them down. We need them.
Slow what down? The, the.
The facilities, the people that we need to work there, they've cut funding. We are closing these places up. Why? And what are we gonna do to bring that around? Because we need them. Secondhand, I also have a sister-in-law in Missouri, and I've watched that fiasco go from being in a group home cared for by doctors, nurses, and all those that are needed, to being put out in a private home specifically, specifically for three people, three patients there, and for the most part, they're cared, cared for by people of no real training. That's Missouri. We don't want to become that, and we're doing that, so.
But we already have some of that already with, with that.
You're right, we do. And, and.
For one other enhancement, whatever.
Last week, I was in Humboldt talking to the CEO of the hospital there, and they are building a new wing for mental health.
That's a good thing.
And that's a good thing, absolutely. They are, as I understand her explanation, the education requirements for those people are, I'll, I'll say daunting. It's not, you get a bachelor's degree and you get to, you know, get this job. It's an advanced degree, in many cases, a PhD. So I, I see that as progress, not progress fast enough, but if, and particularly when you have to have people of that, that educational rigor, but I see that as some, some success. When I was, growing up, it was Cherokee. Cherokee was the big, big place. I, I haven't been to Cherokee. I tried to stay in the district, but I don't think, I, I don't think they are doing anything close to what they used to do.
Way downside.
They're not way downside.
Way down.
So got, most of the buildings have been put into over in Houston.
So I, I, I can't push back on anything you just said. I agree, and, and we, we have, it goes whether it's violence in the schools or, or violence in society, or, or the hospitals having to take this guy for X amount of hours or days and have him strapped to a table or whatever, it's, it's all can be addressed more effectively by mental health professionals.
What about putting them in schools? Like, we have three counselors here, right? But there's a lot of kids, and we are in a population of the school that our district is probably more in the, in the underprivileged district, right? Like the under level.
Higher. We have a higher level of poverty.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, well, I don't know, like, you got funding for that. I, I think that that's a huge thing. When you have one, we have one high school counselor, right? Or two. Is Heather Danberg?
We have a junior high.
She's junior high.
Okay.
So one high school, one junior high, one elementary.
And that's a lot of kids.
We were only able to add that third position, except rarely because of the extra federal funds that we received for S.R.
I just think.
Through, through what?
Through S.R., so the, the money that was.
Federal COVID funds.
Yeah, thank you. But I think that, for instance, the Clarion goal, I know nothing about the situation, but that's a, that's a place and a person that can really connect with those kids, but in high school, I think that they're more worried about credits and what are you gonna do after college, and your ACTs getting taken and stuff like that, where they don't have the time to make that connection with the students as closely. So even adding resources in school, like, I'm very grateful that Caitlin is, was added. Not because she's my niece, because my kids go through heavy stuff. Like, I got divorced, and she was there, and, and I don't know, like, it's, it's really big issues that we, I feel like, didn't have to deal with.
Well, I, my observation from that episodic sub-experience is a teacher is the first, first line of defense, if you will. I don't want to use too many military terms, but if you, if you see something that's not right, I can remember seeing a child one day that said this, she wrote something that was very alarming, and it was like a fourth grade class, and I just, I said, hey, dear principal, can you talk to this child? And, and he immediately, you know, came in and had that conversation. I've had conversations with a fourth grade girl, and during the course of telling her she needed to do more in PD class, she said, well, this isn't gonna end well. Well, that's not a good phrase to be hearing from a fourth grader. So, you know, and I alerted, you know, the senior folks and the, the principal of that, too. So I think, and this, I think, I don't know this for, because I have great experience in it, the first line of, of defense for people who are having problems, even ones that don't seem real serious to the average adult, are, and if they can refer them to the professional you have, then get them to the professional as quickly as possible. But I don't think we're ever gonna have enough that we can have a, a, a mental health person in each building where all the children process through and, and, and give some survey or whatever. I think it's gonna have to still be the teacher referring that person, and, and it's an intuitive thing for the teacher to be able to do, and if they, and they, teachers truly care about their children, when they see something they don't agree with, not agree with, that concerns them, they, they highlight it.
They do, but then that's just putting, so I feel like we expect our teachers to be so much to these kids already, that now we're asking them to yet look for these signs that they're probably not trained in either. I wouldn't know if somebody, I don't, I don't know.
Well, neither do I, but you can still spot things that don't, that are concerning in the behavior or in the language of the child, I think.
Yeah, I mean, of course, you kind of, they're big, big things, but a lot of kids don't talk either until they have that trust hold up.
Well, I agree.
I, I don't know, Clarion and Belmont now, they have, like, they teamed up with Iowa Specialties, so there's a counselor from Iowa Specialties that's in the building, which has been great. It's a great thing, because parents don't have to drive their kids there, they don't have to pull them out of school. And I think that with that COVID, because of COVID, too?
I agree with them.
Iowa Specialty employs that individual, I'm not sure.
Okay, okay. I don't know, I just think that if money can come into the public school and help fund these issues, because it's these kids that are gonna be hurting.
And may I add to that? We are no longer getting solid support out of Department of Human Services. The organization has become so paranoid about lawsuits and legal issues that they would just, right now, it gives me the impression that they would be willing to put off student issues, child issues, until they get their legal, until they get their lawyer's check.
With, with respect to mental illness or, or something else?
Child abuse, those kinds of things. They've been, they've, they've been sued by parents that felt they were wrongly accused of child abuse, those, those types of things, and it is harder than heck to get supports out of VHS.
To follow up on that, I work for the Rhode County Attorney's Office. I've been there for twenty-four years, and I can tell you, I used to have stacks, very frequent mail, stacks of envelopes coming from the Department of Human Services containing reports that were called in. Some were acted on, some were not, some were founded, some were not, and we switched over to an electronic system, and I don't get those stacks of reports anymore, but I can go and look at those reports, and I can tell you, they are vastly less now than they used to be, vastly less. And it's whether, are people not reporting? Are they just not taking the cases? I'm not sure, but I can tell you that it is significantly less than it used to be.
Well, I can tell you that we have tried to call up VHS, and we have practically had to get into a fight with them, takes some of our, some of these allegations, seriously.
And, and when I started there, we had four, five doors full of child cases and delinquency cases, and I had them all in one drawer. That's how few that are there right now.
In, in physical abuse cases, is, is the local police involved or the local police involved?
Well, our first, our first point of reference is VHS. By, under law, that's who we report to.
And the law enforcement gets involved if VHS requests them to accompany them to a home. They come to town to investigate, and they feel like they need someone to accompany, they ask law enforcement to accompany them to the home.
And you have to report, because they're mandatory reporters.
Mandatory reporters who report to VHS, and sometimes, a lot of times, it doesn't go anywhere, and law enforcement may never be able.
Has been dramatically reduced also.
They have, and that's, that's one of the problems. You mentioned, PH, needing PhDs at some of these mental health facilities, but with what we're paying, let's face it, those PhDs can make a lot more money in private practice than, again, working for the state.
I, I think politically, Mark, I'm just gonna be honest with you, this is not an exciting, flashy coin-dawn legislature. Nobody gives a rat's batoot about mental health issues on Iowa. I will tell you that, because it doesn't bring in the votes, bottom line is, mental health has been shoved to the back for burner. I've been on this, I've been on a school board for a very, very long time. I've spent over twenty-some years on the school board here in Belmont, and I'm just telling you, mental health has diminished in its recognition of need by this state substantially, and it's, 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 the exhibit is in human resources, the DHS office, there is less people working in the DHS office today in, in an investigatory role than there ever was. There's a lot of administrators, but not the people who are actually doing the work who go out and investigate the cases. Those numbers are diminished. We don't have the resources, or we're not allocating the resources, to mental health. And whether it affects us directly or indirectly, our kids are the ones that are currently suffering. And that's why we're asking you to look at this as a priority for this state and for all of us who are in education. That's my point.
And I, and I take, take your point very well. I'm, I'm used to not being flashy.
Okay, go, Mark.
I didn't, I didn't get this far by being flashy, I guess. So I, I take your point about, you know, it, it isn't as popular to, to debate than, than other topics, but, but, thank you.
This year, our school was unable to hire a talented and gifted teacher. For many years, we have been unable to even hire a school librarian. Yet we are more fortunate than most schools. All our other teaching positions are filled. However, across our state, schools are operating without the teachers they need. They are using insufficient, insufficiently licensed and prepared substitutes long-term, or they simply are going without. Students are being deprived of vital instructions. The teacher shortage has been getting worse every year, and it looks to get far worse in the near future. Do you have any plans to address the severe teacher shortage?
I think the fact that, that, that it has to be something that they feel rewarded and, and appreciated in, and they probably are not, aren't getting that right now. I mean, most people go, go to their job every day, not because of the great pay, because of the fulfillment that it provides them. So that's, that, the, the factors surrounding that are not, you know, one or two things, it's, it's a host of things, whether it's the relationship with the parents, with the administration, with the students themselves. You know, the fact that you have a school board member here that's been here for a very long time, you know, represents a lot of dedication, so that's a long way of saying in the first instance, no, but I think we also have to have a, an, a conversation about how, how we recognize good teachers and how the, the other teachers are, are counseled and put, and, and put back on the right track if they need to be.
Some of it, of course, is the student debt. Used to be the state covered sixty percent of the cost at state schools, and now it's down to.
Talking about college now?
Yeah, college. And now it's down to thirty percent, the state's funding, and so these students are getting out with these enormous debts, and the idea of making a below-average salary in teaching, even though they may love it in concept, a lot of them can't afford it. Can't afford to take the low-paying job as an educator these days. Between the, the debt they've incurred and the way teacher pay has fallen, that, both of those factors are really affecting us.
And I believe, and I believe I've read that the rate of inflation in, in, in college education far surpasses most of, most of, most everywhere else. So the colleges, quite candidly, are partly to blame, I believe, too, in, in terms of what they're charging.
Absolutely.
I heard the other day that Harvard's endowment is larger than some countries' GDP. Not that we have a lot of Harvard graduates around here, and that's okay, but, you know, the, the colleges are getting a, a lot of money that they're not using to reduce, or at least hold, hold steady with tuition and so forth.
You know, we've worked hard, very hard, in our community to upgrade our payroll for beginning teachers, you know, and, you know, some corporations can offer them twenty thousand dollars more for basically the same kind of education.
And, and when you, even the law enforcement are playing catch-up and competition, too, because the supervisors decided, well, the state mandated this back-to-blue thing, and that created pay, pay hikes of, you know.
Crazy.
Ten, ten, of five-digit pay increases. Not that the, the sheriff asked for it, not that the police chief asked for that, but then we get into this competition even amongst that, that part of our society, and that part of our government, too, that they can't compete with, with the other, the other payrolls. So, understood.
Well, and I'm not a Harvard graduate, but close, I'm a morning psych graduate.
I think they share a lot of curriculum, though.
And one of the things the state does is they, they have subsidies to go to our Iowa private schools, because Iowa did not set up the system of state colleges that surrounding states do. There's half a dozen state universities in Minnesota, there's another half a dozen in Missouri, there's three universities in Nebraska, just like Iowa, but they've also got three state, three state colleges as well. We've put our emphasis on our private colleges, which used to be the backbone of our teaching force. We used to get great teachers out of Simpson, Central, Juarez, Buena Vista, and, but those, but the. teachers out of Simpson, Central, Juarez, Buena Vista. And, but those, but the state funding for safe subsidies for those programs was not kept up. The Iowa tuition scholarships, and, and those kids can't afford to come out of those private schools and go in and teach it.
I think the economics of this is, is just horrible. You take anybody coming out of college, and you say, I'm going to offer you $43,000, $44,000 a year. You can't pay for a house. You can barely make your living, especially if you've got some school debt. The bottom line, we put our teachers in a position to be the paupers in the community. And I'm not saying that there's any way that our government's going to figure out a way to make those salaries comparable to other people graduating with a four-year degree. But the reality is, they should be making $60,000 to $70,000 a year coming out of college, if they're going to, if they're going to have any way of catching up to the, the rate of inflation. We have been giving our teachers 1%, 2%, and 3% salary increases for a long time, when inflation weighed me on that. And so, what's happened is, they're actually going backwards. And that's not very respectful of our teaching cadre. That's how I see it.
But our hands are tied because of the state funding.
Oh, I know. I'm not blaming us. No, sure. Don't blame us. But the problem is, we aren't getting the funds here to be able to take care of our people.
We can blame Mark. He's not, he's not there yet.
I'll, I'll start early.
Next, next year, we'll talk about that.
Yeah. Well, and honestly, I think I read somewhere that you think that parents are the first teacher, right? Well, I think that if you are in a, in a high-poverty area, they're not going to have very good teachers. At home first, and then they come into school, and they have a lot of catching up to do. And then you want the teachers to look for mental health. You want the teachers to be in the first line of defense in a shooting. You want all, all of this stuff that we're expecting the teachers to do, and spend their own money on supplies for their room. And, I, I mean, it's insane what teachers do. They're amazing individuals. But, I agree. I mean, yes, you have to be fulfilled at your job, but you also have to be able to live.
Agree. I, I would just take exception with one thing, and that is, poverty doesn't mean you can't be the first teacher. I mean-
No, I agree.
And, and, and my mother did not have a, a college degree. She graduated from Eagle Grove. She insisted that I always look a word up in the dictionary, but she got softed after a while and told me what, that it was, the Latin word for that was. So, I mean, she was a highly educated lady, and, and we didn't drive Cadillacs, so.
Just sort of Harvard.
No. But she, I, I could go on forever about her. But anyway.
I didn't, I should have phrased it differently.
No, I, I think the, the, the children that, well, I'll, I'll go back to a, a discussion I had earlier in the week. There's a school district, in this district, that the parents have a 20% attendance rate at school at the teacher-parent conferences. I mean, I would, I would, that's abysmal. That, that, I can't find the right word in public setting to, to describe that. But that says, parents don't care. 80% of parents don't care. And, and there's others that have almost 100%. And I don't know what yours is, but I've talked to other school districts. So, the educational challenges that we face, our children face, our parents face, is, is still something that can, can be helped and augmented at home. And I don't think we're going to change that right away. We're not going to fix the nuclear family overnight. But we, we can hopefully do things that, that promote family engagement with teachers, with the school district, with, with whatever it takes for that child to be best educated.
But those are the best teachers that are going to be doing that, right? Like, teachers are going to be the nucleus of that relationship, getting them involved. So, I don't know. I just, they just need all the money. I don't know. It's hard to explain what a teacher is to a kid.
Let me give you another little mundane subject. I say it's mundane because frankly, most people wouldn't even know of it, that it exists. When I was involved in education many years ago, before I left the school board and came back, there was an intent to take away funding directly from the local counties and the school district, and take it to Des Moines, so that it would be fair and equal across the board. And the intent was, that if I was living in Lucas County, my kids would get exactly the same dollars for educating that student in that school as they would in Emmett County or in Wright County. So that the level of the student payment by the district, by the state, would be exactly the same. This was to keep us in Wright County from taxing our, 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 our property owners higher to give more money to our school districts, so we could better educate our kids than those people in Lucas County. Okay? I mean, that was the theory back in the 60s and the 70s. What's happened, however, is, we don't have equal payment for, for each student in the state. Even in this area, we have such a disparity that it makes my head swim. I can't understand, how does this happen? There is no equity or fairness between what Clarion gets for their students per person and Belmont, or Alexander, or Cal, or any of the others. We are the lowest paid in the area, per student. Why are, why is this inequity allowed to, to, to take place? We currently get $7,227 per student per year. Clarion gets 73.15. Are your kids worth more than ours? I don't think so. I think our kids are at least equal to or more. And it's just a simple thing. Somebody in Des Moines, like you, can make this so that everybody who has a student in any school district in the state of Iowa gets exactly the same amount. We have the same amount of money to divide up. Why does some get more than we do? I can't understand that, and that is wrong.
It doesn't have anything to do with taxable property?
No, nothing, nothing, zero. Can't, it's impossible. It's not the way the formula's set up. The formula's set up so everybody should get the same. But the, but what happens is, we, as a district, get less money than anybody else around us.
See, what happened was, back in the 70s, when this formula went in place, there was a wide range of what schools were paying per pupil. And they just picked out the middle number, and they gave everybody below the middle the same amount. We were in that half. And everybody else that was higher got to keep theirs. And the idea was that over the next 10 years, they would start raising up that bottom until everybody was getting the same. But that was supposed to be done in the 80s. And now it's 50 years later, and we're still not there yet. We've made gains in recent years, mostly because Davenport had a major campaign about Davenport students being worthless, worth less. And-
We can do that, too.
And we're making gains, but it sometimes gets forgotten. Sometimes, when the legislature's working out the budget, they forget that. They forget a year when, to try to move those numbers together.
It's not a shiny object. Another of my points. Non-shiny objects don't get the attention they deserve. And this is one of those. It's, it's a matter of equity and fairness. For God's sake, treat my kids the same as the kids in Clarion. Just as simple as that. Make it equal, and be done with that.
Well, the folks in Eagle Grove reminded me that the school district there, and again, I may be going down the wrong path, so tell me. The school district there, the geographical square mileage is no different than it was when I graduated from high school.
It could be.
So, Clarion-Goldfield-Dowes, much bigger. It wasn't Clarion-Goldfield-Dowes, it was Clarion. Belmont was Belmont. You've, you've gotten a little bigger. You, you've pushed your way north and a little east, I think. Not to push your way, but the, the area of, of the school district.
We picked up Rowan and Goodell and Clemmie.
So, the, to me, that, that should help that process somewhat. Because you got five point, what I understand is, you have $5.4 per thousand property levy that you start with. And then you have an 88%, times that, 7,000, whatever it is. And then you have another county levy, which often is a sales tax. And then on top of that, you have a state augment to get you to the 7,227.
But the augment is not equal, is what I'm trying to say. It's just equalized.
Well, and what's, all that money goes to the state. And that state uses their funding formula, and then they give us this per pupil amount, and there's nothing we can do with it. And we can grow, but the, but we can grow to 500 square miles, but it's not going to change our per pupil funding.
But the quarter foot, the quarter mileage has nothing to do with that, Mark.
Okay. But the property taxes, which-
Yeah, it does. Property taxes, yes. But what happens is, they refigure that in Des Moines, and send us what they want to send us per pupil. And that's the part that's wrong.
Okay.
It's happening in Des Moines, where they are not giving us the same amount per pupil as they get in Eagle Grove, or they get in Clarion-Goldfield-Dowes. That's the key.
Of, of the four areas. It's the top area where they can augment from the state. Okay, got it.
And I don't care if they drop the rest of them and lower it, raise us. Don't care. I really think we ought to all be happy. The same amount. I don't care what it is. I think we all need more money, but that's, that's another-
See, you do care what it is.
I do. But I just think it ought to be equal. I'm a, I'm a lawyer, and I think that equity is the key. If you're not treating people fairly and equally, then somehow, somebody's getting screwed, and they have reason to be upset. And I'm upset about it. So, there you go, Mark.
Yeah. I, I have the next issue, and it's very similar. About eight years ago, well, for the last 40 years, local school boards could tack on an additional up, anywhere from 0 to 5% of their general fund budget, to put toward helping at-risk youth or dropout prevention. It's been on the books for about 40 years, 40, 50 years. You can go up to 5%.
What's that, what's that called again?
The dropout prevention levy. And that's just the local property tax this board imposes. Now-
Okay. Could you, can you levy that, or did supervisors have to?
Just the board, this school board, we do.
Okay.
Yep. And now, this board trying to be good stewards, eight years ago, we did not levy the full 5%. This board only levied 4%. But then, some anti-tax people in the legislature said, if schools aren't using all 5%, they're going to cap them, and they can never raise it up to the 5%. And so, even though, over the last eight years-
So, we're still burning under that flame.
Okay. Yeah. So, over the last eight years, our poverty rate has increased. We've got more of a migrant population. We've got more of a diverse population. We have greater at-risk needs. But we can never raise this. And one of the frustrating things is, our own Senator Dennis Guth is one of those people who doesn't believe we should have this funding. And it's, I have a map for you, sir. And the Greens represent all those schools that have the full 5%. And that includes Clarion-Goldfield-Dowes and Eagle Grove. But you'll see that Belmont-Clemmie is down at 4%. And you'll see that some other schools are even lower. And they're locked in. There's nothing they can do.
And that was capped at the state?
Pardon me?
It was capped at the state.
Capped by the state legislature.
And what is that, approximately how much money is that, would 4% develop?
So, the percentage that we don't get costs us probably $55,000 to $60,000 every year, times how many years has it been now?
About eight years.
So, it's, it's a decent amount of money.
So, you're not getting any now?
Oh, we're, yeah, we're getting-
We get 4%.
Yeah, we're getting $400,000.
But what we would like to be able to do is get our full 5%, that other districts already have the legal authority to levy, and we do not.
And it doesn't cost anybody in Des Moines a dime. It's property level local. They just said, you can't Belmont-Clemmie ask for any more than 4%, period. You're screwed.
Okay, so, local control is not local control.
No, that's all that you've got to figure out.
And can you give me an example of what that, those funds are invested in?
Absolutely. Because one of the things we pay for is school counselors. And so, we just talked a little moment ago about mental health services and school counselors. And we're capped, and we can't, we can't get, reach the full amount we can use to, to support school counselors, alternative school tuition, and some other good purposes right now.
Okay. What, what beyond school counselors? For instance, we have an alternative schools.
For kids that have already dropped out, we're trying to bring them back in, and we're trying to find an alternative pathway to the diploma. Teresa, what else could we add to that?
So, we, we can use it to go toward, like, our vocational schools.
Use it for summer school credit recovery.
Summer school.
Summer school credit recovery, yeah.
Are you involved in the, what they call the academy in Eagle Grove that's connected to ICCC?
No, because we're part of NIAC, Community College Academy in the city.
Is there anything similar to that out of NIAC?
No. Well, they have their institutions, but NIAC has never invested in this part of their district.
Okay. They get some of my property tax money, too.
There you go.
Maybe I, I'll go talk to NIAC.
We are working on something in Sheffield, and we may see something coming along here. They've got, NIAC is working on it. They're working on a partnership with SUCA over there.
Pierce SUCA gives back to the community quite a bit.
Because we're really wanting to do it in Lattimer. But since SUCA was a big player, why then it'd be financially more feasible to do it in Sheffield.
Well, thank you for the map, because that, so, if you're pink or red, you're even worse off.
Yes, you are. Yeah. And why wouldn't they want to be able to levy more if they could? See, that doesn't even make sense to me. I would have thought there'd been such a human cry for all those that, that aren't green, saying, how come? Because we're asking our own taxpayers in our own school district for that money. It's not like we're asking Des Moines for a nickel. If, if, if we believe in it, we ought to be able to levy it.
Okay, thank you. One of the things I'd like to talk with you about is the rate of inflation. You know, it's on everyone's mind right now. We're running, I think the report yesterday was at 8.5% nationally. The state of Iowa put a protection for teachers, that they would be guaranteed a minimum pay raise of at least 3% during times of high inflation. And what's high inflation? Anytime the rate of inflation is 3% or higher, teachers get 3% or more, if the board can afford to give them more. But still, I think you recognize, I think we'd all agree here, 8.5% inflation and 3% pay raises for teachers, why then they're losing money. They're, they're losing buying power. Their standard of living is dropping.
Is that annually 3%?
3% annually, yes. And then to come, and the legislature locked that in, that this board has to give a pay raise of 3%. But then, the legislature decided they would only fund schools for this year at an increase of 2.5%. So, not only are teachers losing money, but we could, did not have the money to give them any higher than 3%. And in fact, it's a de facto cut to us. We've got to make the payments on the increased cost of fuel and all the other rising costs that we are experiencing. Plus, we had to give away extra money in pay raises that we don't have, because we couldn't even get to that 3% that we're required to give teachers.
The, are you sure you want to go down there and work with those geniuses? You know, I got a, a simple solution.
Just, yeah, you have a simple solution?
I do, I do.
Okay.
When you get down there, if you get down there, remember one thing. Remember history. Because they forget that down there. That sounds a little odd, doesn't it? At one time, we were number one. Number one, Iowa. We're not anymore. And we had a governor who didn't think 18 was too bad.
Didn't think what?
18 in the nation was too bad.
For education.
For education, yeah. So, that's what you're dealing with down there. Remember history. We were really good one time, this state was. And we could be there again, except they tend to forget the rules of the past. Does that make sense?
I, I understand your point. That's why I said I, I didn't, this wasn't on my bucket list.
We're not here to beat you up.
No, no, and I, I understand that this thing that I'm aspiring to is not going to win me friends across the board, to include the Republican Party in some cases. So, I, I get that. I'm not, I don't know how much of your bio- So I get that, I'm not, I don't know how much of your bio, my bio you read, but I have not been voted most popular in any organization I've been in and not because I tried to be unprofessional or rude or obnoxious, but there's things that need to be done. And again, I'm not going to make great promises here tonight to you, but since the primary, I've been trying to get educated, no double entendre intended there, but as educated on a variety of issues and certainly education is one of the top ones along with the pipeline, so.
The pipeline, good for you. I have one more question. This is probably the biggest one of the bunch, in my opinion. There has been so much talk and scuttlebutt about vouchers. I am a product of public education and it was because of public education and the university Bible that I became a lawyer. All my children were educated in public education in the school district and went on to other schools and other pursuits, probably better off than I am, but that's the way it works. In any event, the voucher system is an insidious way of demeaning the public school system in Iowa. Let me give you at least six reasons that we've got to be careful about vouchers. Number one is it does undermine public education. For every dollar that we put into vouchers or student-first scholarships, whatever you want to call them, you can call them any name you want, but what it comes down to is taking money out of the stream to public education and putting it into a private educational tool. Okay? So first one is it dimes public education because less money will be available to do all of these things we've been talking about tonight. Bottom line is you take money out of public education and when they sit down their carbon of the pie for the budget in March or April or May, what's going to happen is there's going to be less money for the public education because we decided to put it into vouchers. Number two, it picks the best and the brightest. Only those people who can afford to have their bright kids go off to a private school are going to be able to get the benefit of this per pupil education. So what happens is we demean the rest of the student population in the public schools and that's what's been happening with segregation in the South forever. We took the money, put it into the white schools, it didn't give any money to the black schools and guess what? We got exactly what we paid for. So if we take money out of public education and put it into vouchers, what's going to happen is we're going to see a gradual decline from 18th in the country in education to something less than. Number three, it drains the reserves of the public institutions that we have. This institution right here has a reserve that we can budget for and spend, but what happens it is, if we don't get the money to run our system here because we have the students leaving and going off to some private educational institution and taking the money with it, what happens is we become diminished as a district with less reserves to be able to handle unusual and unforeseen expenses coming up and down the road like inflation, which is one of the keys. Number four, we have no, we have no reason to support other people's beliefs. A public educational institution has no business saying, I want to promote somebody's political or religious beliefs, whether it's Muslim, Catholic, Lutheran, whether it is somebody who simply has a school or kids that we want to train at home, whatever you want to call that, that may be a political belief. But as soon as you take that money out of the system, you're saying that I'm going to be able to take your money, taxpayer money, that belongs in the public education system and use it to teach whatever I want in my school system. Because number five, less accountability. Money before voucher systems, there is no accountability. The fact is, we have teaching standards, we have curriculum dictated by the DOE. The reality is that money, we know what that money is going to be used for in school districts in Iowa. We don't have this uproar around curriculum in Iowa like we do in Texas and elsewhere because guess what? Our curriculum comes to us out of Des Moines. That's wonderful because you see, we, if we have an argument about it, can discuss that with the DOE and say, hey, that isn't a really good thing to be teaching our kids. I think we need to bring civics back and I also believe we need to teach more Latin in school.
And history.
And history, yes, Jim would say so. Absolutely. I grew up with Latin and I, Latin is, we're missing that. Our English language is going down the pot because we don't know the Latin basics. Okay, enough of that, back to the, back to the fifth point.
Sixth point.
Six points. I had five, right? You got my first five?
Yeah.
Okay, number six, we have no business as a public institution, meaning this legislature, promoting individuals, religious or civic or political ideas without any accountability for teaching the kids as a, as a public institution must teach them. We are dictated to as to how we teach our kids. And if we need to do something better, that's fine, give us more money, we'll hire more staff and we'll actually have a better chance of educating the kids so we can get back to one, two, three or four in the country in education. But we're not going to happen if we start taking money out and giving it to the parochial schools or to political activated schools or to homeschooling that's, that's run by some political organization that has certain values that they want to teach in those schools.
I would take exception to that.
Help them, help me out.
I homeschooled, we homeschooled our daughter, there was no political agenda there. There was a Calvert organization out of Baltimore that focused on homeschooling and there was a curriculum and as I recall, there was nothing in there about promoting.
You would know, as a teacher, you would know. And I don't have any issue with that at the homeschooling. I haven't been arguing about homeschooling much, but I have seen a rise in recent times of curriculum being provided by institutions that are politically motivated. So they say, get your kid out of that public school and we will provide you a curriculum that is politically motivated. We've seen it here in this district, wanting kids to leave our district and go into homeschooling to be provided a curriculum that's politically motivated. And I'm telling you, our public educational funds should not be used in that manner. So that's my sixth, I'm done.
To touch on the homeschool part of it too, there's no accountability as far as, we don't know what those kids are learning. I mean, we want to have our kids learn the best, most they can, you know, in the time that they're in our school district, but when they're at homeschool, your wife probably did a great job because she was on task and knew what your daughter needed to learn. That's not always the case. Sometimes you have a parent, and we've had this happen here, they're angry at the school or whatever reason. It may be totally unfounded, but they're mad and they're taking their kid home and they're going to teach them. We have no idea what they're teaching them. They can be teaching them nothing. They can be teaching them how to cook, we don't know, we have no idea. And that's where it's really hard to support that because we want what's best for our kids and it's really probably not best for them. And also, we can go back to the DHS part of that, are these kids even in a safe environment? That's the other part that's really scary and I see that, sure you see it at school, I see it through my job. We don't even know that these kids are safe enough, but we don't have any way to check that. There's no checks and balances once they're out of our hands.
When homeschooling first started in the state of Iowa, there was some type of curriculum that they had to be tested out.
There was.
And, but somebody with a higher power than us.
Genius.
Genius, said, that's not necessary anymore.
My daughter.
So there's, there's nothing there.
My daughter, when we still had a homeschool three boards, up through eighth grade, and they met with people, and for a better word, Department of Education, on a total regular basis and the kids were tested and their standards were met and it was an ongoing thing. It wasn't just send them home and mom's going to teach them. The education, I think it was for my daughter, it was quite a bit involved.
Just a little anecdote, one of the things we've discovered in this district, and I think you're going to find that probably in Eagle Grove in some cases, one of the only meals that some kids get in this particular district is the meals they get at school. And I know that because they tell their teachers, we didn't have anything to eat this weekend because mom was doing whatever, dad was doing, whatever happened, there was no food. So the food that they got at school for breakfast and for lunch were the only meals that those kids get all week. And so that's, if they're in a, if they're in a situation where it's homeschooling because they simply want to escape the ridders of the school, I'm not so sure that there's even a safety bell for those kids to eat necessarily unless they were like you, who really were interested in teaching your kids.
There's examples of good and bad on every side of that, I think.
Yeah.
The bill that was passed by the Senate last year talked about $5,500 to $7,200 the state provides that would go to a debit card and there would be a 10,000 student cap on that. How they would select those 10,000 students, I have no idea. And since it didn't get through the House, it'll be re.
It'll come back.
It'll be restarted this year, no doubt.
That's called the student-first scholarships.
And I am not fundamentally opposed to the scholarship because, but at the same time, based on my experience both as a father and as a sub, I know it's not a teacher versus parent thing and it's not a, it's not a binary equation, if I can use math terms, it's a quadratic equation. There's not just, this is best. It's also a supply and demand issue, I think, not to turn it into an economics lecture, but you have for, for anyone, I think in this district, meaning the 56th district, not the Belmont Clemmie, to go that extra mile to go either do homeschooling or go to a private school. You have, you don't have Canow anymore, you have Clear Lake has a, as I understand, a very expensive experience for children up there. You have a elementary school Catholic in Humboldt and you have St. Edmund's High School in Fort Dodge.
You have St. Paul's.
Where's that?
Lattimer.
Okay, thank you. So, not in this district however.
No.
Okay.
Just over the line.
But it's drivable, it's your point, I think. So my, my concern there is it's just that what's, what's best for the child should be what's best for the child. And in some cases, what's best for the child in the case of what we experienced in Okinawa was what was best for our child. I think that's on the supply side. The demand side, there has to be a fundamental dissatisfaction with the education process in a school district for, for a parent to say, I want to take him someplace else. And I don't see that in my discussions with people, in people in this district, people in Eagle Grove, people in Clarion, there's not like, wow, this, you know, this or that or whatever. And it's because of responsive school boards and it's, and it's also because of responsive administrations as well. They listen to the concerns of the child. But if my child was in Cedar Rapids right now and my daughter had a boy come in there and said he, he could come in that bathroom and watch her do her business, I'd be pulling that child out quicker than I can blink an eye. So there's, and if I'm not well-to-do and I can't afford to do anything else but be in that, that environment for my child, then I'm in a, I'm in a bad, I'm in a, my child's in a bad place. So, you know, I think you all agree that the child's welfare comes first. Unless we know otherwise, the parents are responsible for that child's welfare in the first instance. And if they're not doing it, then DHS and others get involved. But, I mean, my experience over there, and there is a large immigrant community of children here, some of them, and I'll, I'll, I'll subdivide it, you know, the young female Hispanic students are probably the most dedicated ones I see in class. They are like, you know, driven. Their male counterparts, not so much, but their male counterparts that have white skin color aren't always, you know, happy to be in school either. And some guys are not happy to have Mr. Thompson as the sub. So, anyway, I understand all your points. I've heard, I think, all of them and I'm not dismissing them at all because I've heard them before, but I'm just saying, there are parts of Iowa where I think it's much more applicable than it is where we sit right now, which goes to the point of, your point of, well then why don't you double down on success? You know, in the military, it's like reinforce success, not failure. So maybe we should be reinforcing success in school districts like we have around us here in this one and not just say, get the children out, you know. What I found by entering the political arena is they want simple answers to complex questions and complex issues and this is a complex issue and I, and I don't pretend it to be otherwise. And, and yet we, we write bills that it takes a lawyer to understand, no offense to lawyers of course, but we need to have simplistic language too. And my, my obligation to you and others in your, your field is to understand what the, what that bill will be because it will come up again and come back and have a similar discussion about what it is and what we can do or what I should do. Not that I will always agree, but, but we need to understand what they're trying to achieve and I, and I want to convey down there that we are not, we're not Cedar Rapids, we're not Davenport, we're not Des Moines, we're, we're the flyover counties of the flyover country. And we have values that represent the values we've defended for generations.
I hope, given that, what you just said, is that you truly represent our district because I think that the points become more salient when we start thinking about taking money from public education, which in effect could help diminish the Clarion Goldfield Downs, the Eagle Grove school districts and the Belmont Clemmie school districts because that money is going to get allocated to private interests rather than to the public education. They're not going to add more money to the pile. I will tell you that because I know how this works, I've been around way too long, way too long. And I just know that if you, if you succumb to that, that siren call of, well, it's only going to be affecting Cedar Rapids and Davenport, et cetera, in a, in effect, in the end, it will affect us here and we won't hit the two and a half percent or the two, the three percent or, or even close to the inflation rate of increases that we need here to continually fund a good public education.
But those are really two separate discussions, are they not?
Yes, they are.
If you don't have students with their parents leaving the school district or pulling the children out.
Right.
You're not losing the seven grand, but you're saying part and parcel of that is not getting, not getting the increase.
We don't get the increases of seven grand each year like we, we could and should.
Well, I think, you know.
It's the siphoning off is the key.
It's the proverbial, you can, we should be able to dribble a basketball and shoot gun at the same time, so.
Maybe so.
That same person that knew Latin taught me to be an idealist and I guess I'll probably just get a smack in the head a few times if I'm probably the new to be Latin.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, we're down to our last couple of questions. I have second and the last and it's, it's an area that's got me quite upset and please, I want to apologize in advance if some of my anger comes across to you because I don't intend to argue, sir. But right now, there is a vast group of politicians that are for public education. Iowa Senate President Jake Chapman opened the last legislative session last January by saying, all Iowa teachers have a sinister agenda to quote, normalize sexually deviant behavior against our children, including pedophilia and incest. What was his name? Jake Chapman, Iowa Senate President. Last spring, Governor Reynolds said that Iowa schools have gotten so bad that the state needs to provide other means of educating students such as vouchers for private schools. And this is going nationwide, just something that happened within the last week, a recent Fox News host called teachers' unions the KKK with summers off. Sir, I'm in my 43rd year of service in the students of Iowa and this is not a company And, uh, this is not a comfortable place to be at this point in my career, in this kind of a state with this political climate. There is definitely a war going on against public education, and it's affecting our schools. It's adversely affecting our students. I want, we've talked a little bit about the, uh, the teacher shortage. And I'm thinking, if a student is sitting in college right now, and they love their public education experience, they could think of nothing more than to emulate those teachers that they loved when they were in school. But they're seeing these political messages come across and knowing what, how they're going to be respected by the public. What kind of choice are they going to make for their futures? Especially when they say, and if I decide on something else, I'll probably end up making more money. But right now, this is hurting our public education because a recent Gallup poll showed an all-time low in adults reporting that they believe school teachers are truthful and have ethical standards. All-time low, and how people regard that. So, with that, I, I don't know quite how to, uh, give you the opportunity to respond, other than to say, how do you feel about this current war on public education, and where do you stand on the issue?
Well, there are good and bad in every institution. My, where I lived before in Northern Virginia was where they had allowed me to school, where the, where the gentleman came in and complained that, uh, his daughter was raped in the, uh, in the bathroom. And, uh, that boy was, was allowed to go to another school and do it again. So, um, the press being the press, the media being the media, they, they, they paint with a broad brush. You know, when, when I was in the Marine Corps, there were, uh, allegations of mistreatment of Marines in, in boot camp. And it turned out that those abuses were, were accurate. What most institutions do is they, they, uh, go overboard in, in, in the fixing of that. And, and in this case, um, the, the media picks up on it, I think, and they do. They don't do us any, any favors by their, by their mentioning that. So, the public official saying the things that they said, I, I don't, I don't concur with that. That's it.
Okay, um, thank you for coming tonight, we really appreciate it. Sometimes we'll talk on, we're tough on you, but that's, we're, we're mild compared to probably what you're gonna say.
Yeah, you weren't tough on me, you're fine.
We appreciate you engaging with us, but the final question we have is, how can we work best with you to get our ideas through to Iowa?
Well, I've already said I need to come back here on a regular basis. So, as I understand it, the workday is Monday afternoon through Thursday. This is a Thursday. Maybe show up here, um, when I have something solid to tell you, and you have something, again, to tell me.
We'll be watching.
And again, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I, I don't play nice for the sake of playing nice. And I'm, I, I was brought up to be a gentleman, and I'll be a gentleman. It doesn't mean I always agree with what your, your assertions are, and I'll, I'll tell you that. And, and you'll tell me that, and as long as we keep it on a professional level. But I need to veil myself to the constituents. I've got, the district, if you don't know already, is all Humboldt, all Hancock, and basically everything but the southeast corner of Wright County. So Dallas is not in, in the district. Rowan is by like a hundred feet. So, um, and, and it won't be every week, it won't make, perhaps even be every month, but during the session, you know. Some days, maybe the best we can do is agree to disagree, and maybe some days, I just need to go down there and make more enemies. I don't know, same.
You did Marine voice.
Yes. In fact, that's.
I was raised by Marines, so I understand.
Okay, I, I won't go through a war story of my Marine voice.
Thank you for your service.
Well, JFK said, if not now, when, if not who, if not me, then who? So, um, JFK's something better every day.
The respect level keeps going up for JFK.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for your time, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chris. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Yeah, you got it.
We don't want to be a pastor here.
Thank you, my man.
Hey, seems on to the meeting here, welcome any visitors or communications, that, any cards?
Anything McKenna, nothing from me.
Okay. Any amendments to the agenda?
Uh, other than we've got a, uh, we've got an interesting agenda tonight, because we've got to stop scheduling these board meetings on homecoming week.
Nope.
Uh, I've got no student representatives, they're, they're off their homecoming festivities. Uh, I've got a high school principal that has to cover homeschool, homeschool activities. Uh, my elementary principal has got a medical lead today, so he's not here. And Teresa has been, and her team have been battling valiantly all week with the Department of Ed computer that has been down and not allowing anybody to enter the reports, which were required to be submitted by September fifteenth meeting, they have to be on the agenda tonight. Uh, and she's been dealing with that diligently. Teresa, where are we with that, are they all ready to go?
I got them in. Don't ask me hard questions, though, because I haven't reviewed them. No, I.
Okay, so we, so we do not have to do anything with that. Uh, we will have that, let me, okay, because I was prepared to say, we're gonna have to scratch, scratch all state reports and the special ed deficit. Mr. Butler is here, but his vocational ed students are off, again, to off the homecoming festivities. So, uh, with that said, no major, major changes in the agenda, other than those things I mentioned.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Got it, okay. Moving on to consent items. Second? Anyone have any questions or anything about the consent items? I do have one. The twenty-eighty agreement. What does that entail? Does it entail us providing transportation for the kids, or it doesn't entail, it's just basically an agreement to?
It just says, we're partnering with them to send our students there.
Okay, I wasn't sure, and I didn't see the agreement, I just.
Yeah. We have not drafted it yet, but we're just clearing it right now.
And I will abstain from a vote because of the substitute bus driver contract, but I have the substitute. So, I'll for a vote on the consent items. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Reports, business manager's report. Teresa, you're up.
I'll take the hot seat. I can put my key down. Okay, so it has been all kinds of fun in the business office. We just wrapped up our audit. Uh, Rochelle Thompson from Hampton came in, this is the fourth year that she's worked with us to go through. Let's see, she was here the last week in August, and then, um, she was sick on and off, and we just had a lot going on. So she did come back just Monday and wrapped up the rest of the testing of our internal controls. Again, this year, we spent in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand federal dollars, which means that we had to do the single audit as well. It's actually a lot more work from her side than it is from mine, because it's so much of a compliance review, making sure that everything we said we would do, we actually did. Uh, but we made it through that piece as well. This year, she chose to test the S R three funding, because that, well, one, because it's a funding source that we are less used to. So if there were going to be issues, she'd be more likely to catch them there. Um, and just because we spent so much money from that fund. Um, and everything, everything went really well. I'm happy with the way that the whole audit went with the records that, that she went through. Our final report is going to look very similar to last year's in terms of findings. Realistically, you need five to six to properly segregate everything. That, we don't need five to six people to run our office, so that's not happening. We're still going to have negative student lunch accounts. Um, we even talked about that during the, the exit interview, and she, she was asking, and I said, yeah, you know, we can have a donor come in and pay off every student lunch account. The next day, we have lunch service, and we're going to have more again. Really, our focus is to make sure that the deficits we have, that they're not old deficits, and that they're not large balances. Um, and, and in terms of those things, we're, we're sitting much better than we have ever been in the past. Overall nutrition fund is actually not going to be negative this year, so that's really exciting. Uh, in part, you know, we had a lot of federal funding come into the nutrition program this year. One hundred percent of the meals were paid for, that made a really big difference for our fund. That, and then, uh, our, that IFRS liability entry that we have to do, a lot of years, we have to eat some extra expense there. In this year, we actually went the opposite way. So, um, it'll be nice to get that off of the report. It's an intense week. When she's here, she does massive testing, uh, we come out with a big old show request. We'll, we'll do a printout of every, every check that goes out the door, every cash receipt that comes into, well, you know, we give her the stack of reports, and she'll highlight things and say, bring me these. But she went through, that all went really well. Uh, three months worth of credit card receipts, which always makes me hold my breath a little bit, because as careful as you are with credit card receipts, it's, it, it is just so many tiny transactions, and it just takes one little thing to, to have an issue there, so.
But Rochelle was spite oppressed by credit card receipts.
Yes. Thelma has been taking care of those, and she is meticulously precise, which just is, it's awesome. I absolutely love having her in the office.
If you don't give her a receipt, she gets really smug.
She does, she does.
Good to have an OCD system.
It's, it's really awesome. So, yeah, all of that, anyway, everything, it, it really went well, and we've gotten to a point now, you know, we've, I've been here long enough where a lot of what is going to be requested, you get a good feel for, you don't know which documents specifically will be, but you understand what the process is, and it's, it's pretty similar every year. Um, and a lot of the documentation, rather than trying to scramble and put it together at the end of the year, you just, you gather it up throughout the entire year, um, and we throw things into a shared drive, as long as nothing confidential, just throw it into a Google Drive, and then the auditor and I both have access, and if she has questions, we just, you know, we can email back and forth and do some of it remote, too. Let's see here, did I miss anything in my notes? Uh, oh, so Ms. Thompson will come back, she'll report directly to you. Uh, the date hasn't been scheduled, but I, I anticipate she's usually here in December or January, so you can look forward to that. Um, she sends out all of her work papers for an independent review, that's just part of her process since, since it's a one-person office. Uh, and it just takes a while to get those things back. I said this last year, but it's so important, I'm saying it again. Thank you so much for increasing our capitalization threshold from twenty-five hundred to five thousand. That saves me hours of work, it saves the auditor hours of work, and the level just makes so much more sense. Someday, I'll probably stop saying that, but I'm not there yet, because it's still fresh on my mind how long that can actually take. That really, that concludes the information that I had to bring to you today for, for the audit. Did you have any questions for me?
One. Based on what you just said, how much more beneficial would it be to raise it to like seventy-five hundred?
So, actually, when, when the five thousand amount was agreed upon, I took that base off of, um, recommendations from the state and, and discussed it with, with the auditor in advance, and, and it was a consideration, you know, did we go to six thousand or sixty-five hundred? But there's really a percentage of assets you want to capture, and it would have, it, it just kind of tipped us a little too far. So this is a good spot. Although I do love the idea.
Well, it's still a matter of time, Bill, too.
Absolutely. And, and not to dip into our, our visitor here too much, but, you know, every single penny that we spend from a public school district is traced. There's not a cent that goes through our building that I can't tell you where it went. I can't tell you on the spot, but I'll look it up and give you a copy. Any other questions on the audit?
Mr. McDaniel and I, uh, we're both present at the audit, audit and audit exit interview, and it was a stellar review, and just kudos to Miss Greenfield and her office.
Yes, thank you.
The ladies in there do a great job, and I know McKenna, now, now that we're getting her in there more, she's, I know that she's gonna fall right into play, too. So, thank you for giving us great people to work with.
Great people deliver great results.
Yep.
Okay, so we're not going to do the school improvement?
No, we are not. We'll, we'll push that back to October. Mr. Butler's ready to go for October.
On to superintendent's report.
All right. First thing on my report is, it's already also projected up on the screen, that's our preliminary enrollment, but I can, I can guarantee you that will change, so I might not spend a lot of time with that. I mentioned our student representative for the board will be here next week. We had radon testing, uh, to start out the school this year, and both our buildings came out clean, so that's good news. So no wor, no worries there. We've got the county health going to be here next Friday, they're going to be giving both COVID boosters and flu boosters to all our faculty and staff that are willing to receive it next week.
Question on that radon. How often does that have to be done?
Once every five years. That's why we were scheduled to do it last spring, and then the state legislature said, we're passing a law that says you have to do it. So I waited until the law got into ink, and said, and it said, well, if you do the testing before July first, then you have to test again after July first. So I thought, woo, come back in September. So that's what they did, they came back and went and gave us clean bill of health. And, uh, just, I did share with you that, uh, Spirit Lake School Board took a, a bold step in, uh, authorizing the carrying of firearms. If the board decides to go that direction, I want something like James Bond carries, you know, kind of the shoulder. BTK, something like that.
Right.
I'm being facetious, I tell you what.
I thought it was water guns.
Yeah, they, they were. Back in the, back in the day, when kids used to play with water guns in school, there were few, far fewer school shootings. We invented that way. Instead, I've got a couple other, uh, oral reports, and that is, first off, uh, it's now, it's very apparent that we are going to be getting a significant amount of federal dollars for school security. We can anticipate approximately fifty thousand per building. For upgrading our security in our two buildings. Before we can spend any of it, we have to bring in a private firm that the state has employed, who will come in and do a, a vulnerability assessment in each of our buildings. But they will go through, and they will look at fencing and cameras and a variety of different factors that they will, they'll want to know how many, uh, trauma kits we have in our nurses station, how many go kits we have in classrooms. And I'm not even sure what they mean by go kits, but that, we have to be prepared to answer that question. But, uh, so we're going to be working on that, doing this assessment, and starting making plans, uh, already this year. So that'll be an interesting change, even though I think we're in pretty darn good shape with our two new buildings and modifications that may particularly in this building with security. One other thing, uh, cyber threats against schools are way up this point. And, uh, another school system, a very large school system in this part of the state had a massive loss. They had a big destruction project going on, they got an invoice from one of their, uh, from one of their contractors. It was slick and clean and looked exactly like it should look, and the invoice said, deposit, do a direct deposit in this account, and went past several people, and they proved it, and that school district paid out a massive sum that immediately disappeared. Now, they are insured, but they, in the meantime, they, until they get that insurance settlement, they had to cancel a bunch of other construction projects, another thing they were working on is school district. One of the things that the insurance companies are getting burned so often by these things, that they're saying there's a possibility they will downgrade our insurance unless we do two-step authentication, which means that we have to, uh, you, you've all done that at one time or another, you type in your password online, and then it sends and lurk through your phone, and you've got to re-enter a different code. And we're going to be, uh, we're going to need to put that in place with all our faculty and staff. We won't have to do it with our students right away, but we're going to have to ask that. And there's. And that's going to annoy some of our faculty, some of our staff, if they have to do, take that extra step. But it's just going to be a necessary step we have to do in this environment where we're in right now. And that's my report. Any questions or comments?
Will we be hiring somebody then to provide security at the buildings that are, somebody who's retired looking for a job?
Not retired yet.
Not retired yet.
They're going to be their retired reefer.
Yeah, that's right.
The jackass.
Yeah, he had a job. We're going to move on to our annual meeting. Review the board treasure report, examine financial accounting books for fiscal year 2022.
Is that this sheet here, Theresa? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I gave everyone a packet. These might scorch your fingers because they're like seriously hot off the press. They should all be in the same order as, oh, no, we just talked about the first one down and the rest are under action items. So this very top sheet, this is as summarized as our financial information can possibly get. It's really just a culmination of everything you've seen, all your, any bill, any payment that's come through. When you look at, I'm just going to kind of start on the left and work my way across here. So you look at the general fund, we are talking about cash balances. This doesn't have anything to do with spending authority, so this is money on hand. And you can see there that our cash is up, which makes sense. We've been living in additional cash. So that's something we'll be able to pull back on here now. Activity fund, raised from 95,000 to 116, so that is good. Management fund, we know that we've been intentionally spending that down. The save fund, again, we are intentionally spending that down to pay for all of our construction and our bond payments. Pebble's up a little bit, but that's, I mean, really between save and Pebble, it's better to just think of them as one funding source as far as these reports. So, you know, overall, the capital projects are down. Not much to say on debt service, it's right what we expect. The nutrition fund, like I mentioned, that we are seeing an increase in there. Again, that's the federal funding, the swing in IFRS. And then another piece that's just kind of interesting, last year, because of the supply chain issues, we couldn't get our commodities. So we only used $4,000 to $5,000 in commodities for food, which meant that we had to purchase additional food to meet the needs of our students. This year, that was, we actually overspent through allocation a little bit, but they had surplus from prior year. So we spent $45,000 worth of food that was commodity. So we didn't actually have to pay that, which left us in a much better position at the end of the year. Internal flex is just a pass-through account for some benefits we have. And then the scholarship fund there. So did you have any questions looking at beginning to ending balances on any of these funds?
No, they look like big numbers to me.
Big numbers or pretty numbers when you're talking about finances, as long as it's.
They're all pluses, but.
Yeah.
But the one that just flabbergasted me when I went across with the scholarship, we're holding $1.6 million in scholarship funds.
I mean, with the, it's a combined meeting between the foundation one and two boards every year when they're working on determining what that award should be. And this year, for the class of 2022, they were able to increase that to $3,000 for every student who graduates from Thelma Clemmie to be able to come back and claim. So that's fantastic. It's a nice chunk of money. When I talk to the kids, especially the ones who choose to go to, say, NIAC or Iowa Central, that money goes a long way at putting them through college. So yeah, thank you for pointing that up, Gary. If you don't mind, I might just hang out up here because you're just going to get back to me in a couple minutes. We have our resolution up next, our depositories for State Bank.
Well, we need to, I guess, the board approved that for your.
Motion to approve the treasurer's report, so moved. All those in favor? Okay, on to the resolution for our depositories. Page 42, First State Bank, Three Y'all Bank Trust, Iowa Schools Joint Investment Trust.
No changes from last year.
Right, all same. And it's a resolution on the roll call page.
Rick McDaniel, Michelle Murphy.
Hi.
Sharon Artima.
Hi.
Gary Burkland.
I'm staying.
Ryan Myers. Heather Ridgway.
Jimson. Oh, sorry, I, oh.
My abstentions because of conflict, I'm on board directions for State Bank.
On to, wait, sorry.
McKenna, so you would note that, that abstention and the reason?
Moving on to appointing the board attorney. I've had not a lot of contact with Ann Smyczek, but contact with her, she's wonderful, heavily registered.
I'm hopefully approve her.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
opposed? That passes. Appointing a representative to the ISB delegate assembly.
Last couple of years, we haven't sent anyone to the delegate assembly. We do not have to. But it's available if somebody would have an interest in representing our district at that. It's an interesting morning of four hours of parliamentary procedure.
Interesting and parliamentary procedure in the same.
I did one a long time ago.
Ink will cut.
Tell me to vote on that.
No, either now.
Moving on to action items. A, the state financial report, which is one recently on the hangout procedure. Okay, so the first report to talk about here is the annual transportation report. What this really is doing, this, so what I do in my office each year is we submit what is called the certified annual report. That is the car. It is just aggregate data from where all of our fund balances are, total expenses, total revenues. That all floods through to fill in these other reports that we're going to talk about. The first one's the transportation report. So this one's really just saying, okay, what's the total amount that you spent on all transportation in the district? Just to get an average cost per mile and so that it kind of gives us an idea of how much it costs for us to run our buses, whether it's for the regular bus route or if it's for activities or other trips throughout the year. You know, it's actually kind of interesting. I was looking at four years earlier today and it is just an absolutely perfect line outside of that COVID year with shutdown. COVID year, the costs were, the cost per miles way up, the number of miles is way low. But everything else, it's an absolutely perfect trend line. So that's good. That means that we are really managing those costs. We're seeing, there has to be some kind of increase because we want to be paying our people, but there, it's a very steady increase, that's good. Average cost to transport child is $1,280 about, so. We kind of fall really close to the state average there.
I noticed there was an extra 7,000 of non-group miles for activities and education trips. And that's a substantial increase in the amount of miles driven for those kinds of activities, not just delivering students to home and back to school. It's an observation.
Well, I think we did a lot more field trips. Last year, they've been shut down, prior year with COVID.
We really did. We just, you know, any of those trips down to Des Moines or to any of the things the kids do. So it's been nice to be able to get them back out a little bit. And professional development too.
Yes, that too.
Oh, that counts as that?
Yes.
Yep, that's in the non-route miles includes all of the professional development.
Before we had teachers zooming in and last year, we tended to get more teachers out on the road.
Yep, absolutely. Teachers and other staff did really do a good job keeping all the staff trained and up to date, so. Any questions for Theresa on the transportation report?
I guess we're, motion approved.
Motion to approve the transportation.
We'll move.
Second? Second? Vote on that, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, same side. Okay, that's approved. Moving on to the certified annual report for, which is also page 45, that's her paper she was just talking about. Yep, so the certified annual report, we actually went through that with the fund balances. That's all that you have to look at on that one. Looking for a motion to approve.
Sure. Second.
Second, Gary? Vote on that, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, same side. Moving on to the special education supplement. So that is, if you flip over the next one, fiscal year 2022, special education balance with the prior year comparison. Overall, we did not see much of a change in expenditures. But what we did see, I don't know if you remember, but last year, we had a very large deficit balance. Well, our revenue is based largely on the certified enrollment, which lags a year. So now this year, we got the money for all of the additional services that we actually used last year. So overall, our total deficit spending in special ed was about $488,000, which is in line where we previously had been.
And how much of that do we get covered by special levy and by supplemental pay?
So what we can do with this, and actually, when we go on to the next sheet here, we'll talk about the allowable growth request. And we can go to the SBRCs, the School Budget Review Committee, and say, hey, we had to spend this money so that we could give our students the best education. Can we get the spending authority?
So there's a source potentially to get that money?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Okay, a motion to approve a special education deficit.
Supplement.
I'm sorry, sorry. Sorry. This is.
Then we come right back and approve the deficit.
Yeah, right now, you're approving the report. Heather, second? Gary, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, same side. We'll move on to the.
Special deficit. Which is basically the very next page.
Yep.
Where she puts, she comes up with the same.
It's the same information. But like I was just saying, what we're doing here is we're saying we did spend the money. So now, we don't want to just be out that spending authority because then that eats into our general education dollars. So we will, I will submit a request and say, hey, can we have spending authority for that? This has nothing to do with cash at this point. The cash is out the door. When we talk about the budget later on in the spring, if we need additional cash, that's when we ask for it. This is just spending authority and I definitely appreciate it if you approve me requesting it. We don't like these negative numbers. Sharon? Second, Jim? All those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side? Approved. Moving on to the next action item, new position of weight room coordinator, some page 46 on your packet.
Right, it's also up on the screen there. And what we're trying to do is, this is a proposal coming from our activities director and our coaches, that they would like better supports for getting our students into the weight room. Other schools, a number of other schools have already created such a position. For example, at Eagle Grove, they have such a position that gets $3,900. And I also have an assistant that gets 2,500. Clarion has one position that pays about 3,200. We're proposing, we're proposing a pay of $3,800. Should have had that in the recommendation, but I'd ask that that be included in the recommendation. The 38, new position at $3,800 to get people, get either a person or a team of people to be working in our weight room to help get our kids in better shape, build muscle, become better athletes.
I, I'd like that motion.
Any discussion?
Would this be during the summer too? They would be doing the weight room?
Probably not, no. This would be during the school year. We're talking probably an hour to 90 minutes, four days a week in the morning, maybe an hour, 90 minutes, four days a week in the afternoon, roughly. Some flexibility depending on the school schedule and the ability of us to staff it.
So is this going to help our football team?
Not for this, not for tomorrow night.
No.
Coming up soon. We would hope so. We had a person in there. Here's Will Tony.
Well, Tony did.
He did. But that's just his shoe because.
But he didn't get paid though. He was.
No, it was. Yeah, I think that's the reason why we haven't had one, because we had somebody like that to cover it. So he could do it. Yeah. Well, he could duck out on his dad. Work for Joe.
So are we going to put some kind of structure in place to have athletes to participate? So the football players are going to, there's an requirement for them to participate? Or there's a strong encouragement for them to participate? Because I think in the past, I heard some rumbling about that with, you know, the track coach didn't want the kids to be lifting weights or the volleyball coach didn't want the kids to lift weights.
I remember.
We're going to, you know, find some across the board continuity with that.
We have struggled with that in the past. I think a lot of that has diminished as we've changed our coaches. And the people that are really in tune with the sports know that you don't become muscle-bound, you don't lose flexibility, you don't lose the ability to run or jump or something like that by lifting weights.
We're not raising, we're not going to get a missed service.
No, we're not trying to, you know, we're not trying to create bodybuilders or get somebody ready for the WWE.
So will it be required?
I don't think you can require.
Suggest.
Yeah, I think it's strongly encouraged is the best we could probably say. I mean, short of hot Kanye kid, you grab him and drag him to bed, I don't know.
No, my point is that if there's no one that shows up and this person is hired and it's 3,200, it's wasted because it has to be somebody that's going to relate to those kids and want to get them in that weight room.
Well, and not only that, but you see, this is a feeder. What happens is the weight room person, he is the one that designs hopefully the kinds of workouts for these kids. But reality is, who feeds them are the coaches of the sports. That's going to make sure these kids get there. In other words, you want to be on my team? I tell you what you need to do. I want to make sure you're in the workout room. If you're not in the workout room, you're not going to be able to do the thing I need you to do on the football field or on the volleyball team or whatever, basketball.
And it would be our intention to say, Tuesday morning is football day, Thursday morning is football day. We're going to have supervisor in there as well as the football coach, just to make sure our teams are getting in there and using that. Maybe Monday, Wednesday's volleyball team, Tuesday, Thursday's football, something.
And Clear Lakes always has their structure, weight programming, it shows in their athletics. Any other questions or input? Vote on that, all those in favor of hiring a weight room coordinator at 38, you said 38 to 12?
Yes.
Most of them are ready?
Yeah.
Yeah. Say in fact by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Motion carries. On to early dismissal for teacher professional development on Wednesday, October 19.
The board has routinely consented to allow the district to dismiss six times per year, two hours early for the purpose of professional development. We've got a major school culture issue for our staff that we're working on this year, but we're also taking a very serious effort to do work with a program called Clarity to try to improve our student test scores and our student achievement. We would like at least, to begin with, at least one more early dismissal and then potentially I may come back and ask for a couple more, one or two more, come the springtime. But this time, I would ask the board, we have no early dismissal scheduled for October. I'd ask the board to allow us to dismiss two hours early on Wednesday, October 19.
So moved. Second? Any discussion on that? Take a vote on that, all those in favor of that, say by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Carries. All right, so we're on to board and superintendent's. All right, so we're on to board and superintendent goals.
Let's see, I think here's where we ended up when we met last Thursday. We had basically, by coincidence, two groups operating independently. And one group articulately said, student achievement has improved across all demographics to ensure they are well prepared for college or career, where the other group said, I student achievement.
That's because Teresa's really short with her words.
Concise.
Yes, concise.
Nothing wrong with either one of those, nothing wrong with either one.
One of them is fairly flashy, though. Lots of bells and whistles.
Group B must have been Gary's group.
No. Was it?
Yes.
I see Dan wrote it.
Lawyer, wordy.
We told it and then he wrote it.
I just want to say in my defense, it was like brainstorming, not final goal writing.
I know, that's true, it was, it was. Yeah, I still think that's a great one. That is the one thing we all said that we focused on, we talked about. We've got to get ways to improve student achievement. And we need to, we need to be able to measure it. And then we have to help hold everybody accountable to get it done.
Agreed.
That's what I see the one, two, three steps to it all. The next one, I I mean, that's all measurable, you know? And we can figure it out. And we need reporting, we're getting reporting currently. But we want to see something change. And that's why maybe this clarity program will help us do a better job of at least, if the kids know some material, we need to be able to see it recorded someplace. And and maybe they're just not testing well because they're didn't get good sleep tonight before, I don't know. But the second one is more nebulous, more difficult. That is harder to articulate and certainly harder to identify achievement in the turnover piece. You know, we can see the turnover, I mean, that that is an example, but Rade is the number one place to work? Relative to what, I'm not sure.
We're struggling with that, that this is a goal of our TLC. And this is one of the things we're struggling with is how we're going to measure that. Right now, we're looking at primarily a qualitative goal of our TLC going out and interviewing our teachers, our support staff, and saying, how do you feel about things this year compared to previous?
That's one step you can take in. How else do you know? Sometimes people don't articulate it all that clearly either. You have to almost have a sense about what's going on in people's collective mind.
So where do we go from here, then?
That's what I'd like.
Well, I think you need to come up with, I think you need to refine group A and group B into some, into two goals. And then I think you need to identify, I'd suggest, next time we get together, we talk about what's the board's role and what's the superintendent's role in those two goals. And last time we, Harry Ilikenthal said, what happens at the board table is what flows down through the organization. And that's why he recommended monthly student achievement reports.
Right.
And then our other focus at that time, two years ago, was on positive behavior intervention supports. We wanted to really work on what was happening with their kids and how they were, how behaviors were, how our teachers were handling it. And we have made great gains, by the way. It's really, PBIS has done wonders for our pro- our program here. It has made a difference.
Didn't we just institute that at high school level, too, now?
We did three years ago.
Three years?
Yeah, it was four years ago now. Yeah, that, a lot of high schools have not invested in it because they think of it as a little too elementary. But our high school said, no, this is something we want to do and we put it in K through twelve.
Well, I think they tailored it to meet their needs.
Absolutely, yeah. Because it's not really about the fun little games where at the elementary they're giving away rings or tokens and things like that.
Or tubes or.
Or bucks. Yeah.
Bucks, big bucks.
Bronco bucks, yes, Buddy's Bronco bucks. It's really about teaching the kids how to behave and reinforcing the good behavior. That's really what it comes down to. But that's why we had, the board's goal then was for, to have at least two reports a year on PBIS. Maybe when you get, come back to this next month, maybe you'll say, okay, we need two reports from the TLC on on what they're doing and how they're progressing.
That might be a better. For the, the second one, the cultural, that might be a better, you know, being enforced from TLC or using that as a way to measure it.
Is there like surveys, do they do surveys of the staff or anything for the TLC, like how they?
There are climate surveys. I have used them in the past. I have not found them terribly helpful because they're so broad and there are so many different things about what is school culture. And a lot of it tends to focus on students.
Sure.
And.
Actually, I think the culture starts at the administration level. If it's a good culture there, it trickles down to throughout the whole system.
Well, like Harry said, it starts with us and then through the administration, through the staff, through the students.
Absolutely.
I I like the second alternative for group B for the student achievement piece.
I like group B for both of them, actually. I I think that they're all the same thing. They're saying the same thing.
Yeah, yeah. And and just one is, you've got more words.
Right. Do you have any question?
A man of words and not of deed, just like a guardian full of weeds.
That's the only thing he can remember from his high school career now.
So we set these as our our four goals, right? And then, so then do the superintendent?
Well, it needs to be worded a little differently.
Well, we really, we need to identify our strategies there. One, the wording we want for student achievement and the wording we want for culture for our goals. And then we need to have the action steps we will take to achieve those. Those are the goals for both board and administration. And then you, next week, next month, when we come back, we'll talk about the action steps of how we'll make sure we achieve those goals.
Breaking them down, okay. I like it. And then she had also talked about adding in like the positive to the board meetings, you know, like the good that's happening.
Yes, she did.
Can we do that? I think it'd be really great. I don't know how or what that is going to look like, but I think it would help the culture if it does start here with us.
Well, and and frankly, my thought would be that the staff, and I'm talking about principals, TLC, and in some cases, our superintendent can provide an opportunity at board meeting, tell us something really positive that's happened in the last month. And maybe somebody will volunteer to say, hey, this is what's happening, here's how I feel about it. You know, it's hard to get people to shake loose sometimes, but it is an idea. And and if you don't open the door to positive comments and reflections, then it's not going to happen. And you don't even hear about it.
Sure, and it being like a staff related, right?
Yes.
Staff that's your staff related, something good.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be about themselves, it can be about their students, their class, you know, how excited they are about how well these kids have been, have acclimated to the to the regime that we set up here at the school district. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just brain surfing. I mean, I'd like stuff revealed at board meetings. And it needs not be sugarcoated, but it needs to be real. And I think that's how we reflect to the public that we're, we have our pulse and what's going on in the district. If we hear from the kids and from our staff, like, like Mr. Butler was going to be here with the kids tonight, we were going to hear about that particularly. We'll hear about it next time. But the reality is, that's how every, how we inform ourselves and also how the public knows that we're keeping our hands on the pulse.
Sure, well, and to be honest, like I I hear a lot from the elementary side of things because I'm there every day thinking about my kids.
Yeah.
So and and you can see it, you know, the the good. So I I feel like, I don't know, like even if we had outstanding agenda item, I I don't know what you would call it, but where if the staff does see something good, they have the opportunity then to say, what is good? I don't, like a kudos, like kind of.
Yeah, 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 something like that. And it could be presented by one of the principals.
Correct.
It's much like what, I think, I don't know, the high schools, Julie Yasker's children shared with whoever her daughter was, he liked them, too. It's lots like that, but just for the staff and faculty and.
Could be two minutes, and that's it, just, it doesn't have to be long, it's just.
Recognizing the good, yeah.
Yeah, although it is, it can be a tricky thing in schools, I know. Teachers tend to have a very egalitarian attitude toward their fellow colleagues that they don't necessarily want to stand out, even if they are outstanding, they don't want to stand out. And I've had teachers that absolutely have refused and even gotten upset at the idea that they should get special recognition.
That's not a bad thing.
No.
That tells a lot about that person.
There's a lot of humility.
They're very, exactly, very willing to be humble and do their job. And I find it admirable for yourself, who we do.
I remember one, and I'll mention her name, who was like that, we all knew her. Ruth. She's retired now.
Yep.
She was a classy woman, very bright, taught kids really well, but she never wanted anybody to say anything about her.
Ruth Johnson.
Ruth Johnson.
Well, she was that way.
She's going to be mad at you.
I know, I know. She's probably listening right now.
I don't know. I think it would be a fun thing to try and.
I didn't mean to throw you under the, under the bus, Ruth. Yeah.
If nothing else, it makes the staff and faculty know that they're being seen by us.
And it's a respectful thing, and it should be taken in that thing, that's a piece of respect.
Yeah.
Anything more on that?
I don't know how to do it. Who's going to rewrite this, so it's something we can use?
I'll work on something based upon our discussion today, and then we'll, we'll have, talk about, talk about those action steps. When I talk about action steps, you see here on the next page, the actual action steps we identified and how we would report our progress for those other two, for those others. So I'll come back with something so we can talk about that at our October meeting.
Excellent.
On to discussion items. Redistricting, new director of district.
All right, yes, this is just for looks right now, just for looking at, the board can't take action until our November meeting. But things have only changed slightly. But we had a District Three, I think we extended up to Goodell before. And with the, with the, the growth of the northern suburbs of Belmont, why then, why then the District Three just encompasses the the mile north of Belmont, that's it. And what that means is, as Sharon pointed out, she will now be in the same district with Ryan. And Sharon just expressed with me before the meeting that she is running for another term.
Did you see her?
You didn't say that?
I did see her.
Is there a bonanza sensation?
Since this doesn't affect, since this doesn't affect anything until the next election, why then I guess that that means that Ryan and Sharon will not have to run against each other to represent seat one.
But then we'll have somebody who may run.
True. And we'll need to find somebody for seat three.
What if nobody runs in these districts?
That's the problem.
If no one runs, then it is the right end candidate. And sometimes that can be a nightmare because it can be somebody with two votes that gets on the board.
Didn't that happen with city council recently?
Against their will.
Yeah, yeah. Can be against their will, can be somebody with an axe to drive that gets, that's down at the pub and finds three people to vote for him, come the election the next day.
That's how Gary goes.
We got to start. If the person who gets elected refuses to serve, why then the board appoints that seat.
Yes, they they could decline to serve, won't take the oath, and that might we have to appoint someone.
Out of that district.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Until the next election, which means we'd have to vote again in two years.
Yeah.
We got to make it look better here, we got to be happy.
Yes, want to run?
That's right.
Moving on to the annual convention for our Association of School Boards.
Oh, doesn't that look like a hot one this year?
Michelle, can I just ask you a question about the map?
Sure, absolutely.
Could you scroll back to the map, ma'am?
Sure.
Um, the inset.
The inset?
Should be the same as the big map?
Yes.
The numbers aren't, don't.
Boy, they don't, do they?
They don't, and I looked at it twice and I thought, okay, maybe I don't understand math, but I think I do. But I'm not, but I'm not getting paid as much as those people in the map.
No, I looked at it, I thought, I looked at it four times and said, but this is making sense. So I said, I'm not going to worry about it.
Well, I'm glad you came here for you.
Well, no, we aren't going to vote on it till next time, our November.
I told my grandmother, who cares?
Shouldn't, isn't that math new, right?
They'll, they'll get the numbers fixed, I'll bet.
Okay.
Because I was saying, I'm in the Upper West Side, and how did, how did, how did my number change, you know? How about that?
Yeah, I didn't notice that either.
For what?
What did you call it?
The Upper West Side.
You mean up on the hill?
No, the Upper West Side.
On the other side of the cross.
Up on the hill.
You live up on the hill, just like I did.
Over the river.
When I was.
And up the hill. Upper West Side.
It's up on the hill.
It's gone.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, school board convention.
It's really exciting. You see those speakers? They're going to be dying all night.
So it is in?
November what, sixteen?
November.
Yeah.
Yep. Pre-convention is on Wednesday, the sixteenth, and the full convention's on Thursday, the seventeenth. And I think right now McKenna and I would just ask for preliminary account on who thinks they may be attending.
I think I may be.
Gary and Jim and Michelle?
It's going to be a party down there, ma'am.
I need a break after I have my daughter married. So I don't think that's the kind of break that they're going to have. But, well, you know.
I'm planning a dinner for over a hundred people for the next week, so.
That's true, you are.
Yeah, that's very good. And McKenna's already got the hotel rooms booked. What are we booked into? I think we're booked into that hotel that's connected right to the convention.
The Doubletree? Oh, no, different than what we said last year.
Yeah.
So that would be nice.
The one last year, that one last year was dog.
A dog? Does that mean not good?
It was not good.
I like the old Holiday Inn, when the nurses change their shift.
Yeah, that's true.
Bar is visible.
Yeah, that, that hill, the hill's dark, but it's connected.
Make sure you don't turn the old receipts.
Say what?
Don't turn those receipts.
And there's, and there's a great new restaurant down there. In the old Hotel Fort de Moine.
Love that.
It used to be Guido's.
Yeah, it used to be Guido's.
No, 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 Guido's was in the Savior, I'm sorry. Hotel Fort de Moine was.
I remember the show down there.
It's been a long time now, also, I forget.
And then it was called Crowfoot and Bird now.
You're really dating yourself now.
Well, Crowfoot and Bird, it's after the, those are the last names, the two architects that originally designed Hotel Fort de Moine. Yeah, and it's, it's very nice. We'd better get reservations in soon then.
Hi. Can you, I can't go because my company's having a new service video report. But is there a way that you can watch it on Zoom? Can you still be a part of them?
I've never, I'm not familiar.
Probably not, but.
I'm not sure.
I'm kind of bummed because it was, like, I learned so much last year.
It was fun, it was. Yeah, I I go every year just because I, I enjoy hearing many inspirational things that we can do in public transportation.
Right.
Any other board comments, items for future agendas?
We're done before nine thirty, that's a miracle.
Yeah, we did have to meeting with just more council.
Right, so baseball, I think last time we talked about. Right. So baseball, I think last time we talked about baseball being on the agenda.
Yeah, and we're advertising right now. And yeah, there was no precise that we didn't get on this month's agenda. It will be on next month's agenda. But right now we're advertising, seeing if we can get some advocates, get, get that thing started.
That's good.
That'd be great.
How we coming on our project? Anything new? No? Well, then I will. I should.
Let's not even bring that up.
I see lots of late night.
They're making progress. But it's like the countertops in the bathroom. Did I tell you about those?
No.
Those were approved by the architect for purchase in March of twenty-one.
And then they changed that.
Last month, they still weren't even ordered. They got delivered and they weren't cut out properly. They had to refit them and cut them. And they, so they installed them and now they pull them back out so they could cut holes in them and sinks. And they're just a piece of formica like by Menards or something like that, for crying out loud.
I didn't think we're getting it in cheap.
I think they had. You could do better.
I think they had problems like at the clinic remodeling.
I wouldn't be surprised.
They had the countertop come in and it was corrupt. And then the countertop come in and it had been damaged. So they had to flip it or something crazy. Yeah, I think it's across the board.
We did lose a bunch of glass. I can't even remember what the glass was. Do you remember what the glass was for Teresa? Were you there? No, you weren't even there. Nobody was at that meeting was there except me. There was a bunch of glass and somebody at the, was loading it off the truck and decided instead of stacking it vertically, they just piled it on horizontally. Of course it cracked, broke all the glass, further delayed that part of the project. That was just two weeks ago.
This is the glass for our.
I see Eddie's glass.
No, not that. I don't think it's that glass. I think it was the glass that goes around the office doors or something like that.
Blessings.
If there's nothing else, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
Second?
Yep.
We are adjourned. Are you?